Good evening. The February 26, 2019 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1. Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Judy Zanetti, Public Foundation Officer, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. King, and good evening Superintendent Mayor and board members. I tell you every time I stand at this podium that when I'm here, I am here for a really positive reason and to share with you something very special. And that could not be more true this evening because this evening I get to introduce you to Marion County's 2019 Teacher of the Year and Rookie Teacher of the Year. And just so you know, Marion County is one of very few counties in Florida that select a Rookie Teacher of the Year. So I'm excited that we do that here in Marion. And of course, many of you were at the Golden Apple Gala. I think most of all of you sitting here were at the Golden Apple Gala and have had an opportunity to hear these two fine teachers speak. But this evening, I'll begin by introducing you to Holly Cunningham. Holly Cunningham is a HOSA, a Health Occupations Teacher at Westport High School. She's also a practicing cardiothoracic nurse. So Holly brings what she has learned in the real world into her classroom and makes her classroom the real world as well and provides real learning opportunities for her students. And now I'll let you meet Holly. Excuse me.
Good evening, Dr. Mayer, School Board members, parents, students, teachers, and community members. What an honor and privilege it is to stand here before you tonight as the Marion County Teacher of the Year. In 2013, I left a demanding and lucrative full-time position as an invasive cardiovascular nurse to follow a calling and become an educator. As I began to teach, I reflected on my own life and which teachers have influenced me the most. Our first teachers make us who we become in life. Starting a new career as a teacher was foreign to me. I had no formal training. Being able to take page, bring patients back from the dead, or assist in angioplasty procedure or coronary stent placement, these were things I did every day. But my first year teaching, I would cry because I felt like a failure. Did you know that 50% of all teachers quit within the first three to five years? To become a good teacher, and one day a great teacher, I was going to have to work very hard. Harder than I had worked on call, harder than I had worked to complete college. Yes, I had three jobs to assist with the cost of college, but I chose to work hard. My mother's family is from Texas, and my great aunt Nancy was a millionaire. I could have easily accepted her abilities to pay for my college and one day inherit her fortune, but that is not who I am. My earliest teacher is my father. He is in the Army Special Forces. He served in Vietnam. He taught me, if you are on time, you are late. Never waste another person's time and never trust another person that wastes yours. He would wake up at four o'clock in the morning to start his day off the right way. He would arrive to work 45 minutes or an hour early, not being compensated, but to make sure that everything was as it should be and to catch any mistakes before they become mistakes. This background, this work ethic, my determination, passion, and success are all modeled after this first teacher. I instill and teach what I was taught to my students, who I consider my own children. My bar is set high and it falters for no one. Angela Duckworth did extensive studies on success. She wrote a book describing this information, utilizing various variables. She visited West Point, the National Spelling Bee. She also visited rookie teachers in some of the hardest urban schools in our country. In all of these studies, there was one characteristic that emerged as a significant predictor of success. It was not social intelligence, it was not good looks, it was not physical health, it was not IQ. It was termed as grit. Grit is passion and perseverance for long-term goals. Grit is having stamina. It is sticking with your future day in and day out, not just for a week at a time or a month, but for years, and working really hard to make your future a reality. I'm making a point to model grit in every area of my life. I want to inspire and motivate others through my passion and purpose for education. Teachers, we are all teachers. Like Mark Twain said, "I will never let my schooling get in the way of my education." We can make a difference in all of our students' lives. I will end quoting Angela Duckworth. In her book, Grit, she makes remarks to her father, who thought her not the best in her family. She said, "I'm going to grow up to love my work as much as you love yours. It won't just be a job, it will be a calling. I will challenge myself every day, and when I get knocked down, I will get back up. I may not be the smartest person in the room, but I strive to be the grittiest." I know that my grit has led me to being named Your Teacher of the Year, and I thank God for this blessing every day. Thank you.
So as, as our teachers are selected at their school to become a teacher or a Rookie Teacher of the Year, they submit a portfolio, which is read and scored by our committee, and those are read and scored blind. So when they first read them, they have no names or schools attached to them. They are literally read blind. So our committee members don't meet any of our teachers till they come to the interview process, and then from there, they're observed in the classroom. And I can tell you that the comments that I heard from our committee members when they came back from Holly's classroom and from Carla's classroom overwhelmed me with pride for what is going right in Marion County public schools. These teachers are amazing. And something that Carla and Holly have in common is that this is also not Carla's first career. Carla started as an interior decorator, and she has a degree from FSU, is that correct?
That's right.
Yep, they're both FSU Seminoles, actually. And both of them felt a calling to teach and to be in the classroom. And one of the comments that I heard from a very long-term retired educator that was on our Rookie Teacher of the Year Committee, she had, she had served here as a district administrator and as a principal. And when she came back from Carla's class, she said, "I've never seen anything like it." And she said, "A student walked in," and she said, "I was able to identify that student as being a special needs student." And I thought, oh my goodness, you know, this, this child may not be able to be incorporated into this classroom, so I'm going to keep my eye on him. And she said, within two minutes, she couldn't have told that child apart from any other child in Carla's classroom. That is the impact that she has in her classroom. And I'm proud to introduce to you Marion County's Rookie Teacher of the Year from Shady Hill Elementary, Carla Cavalier.
It's nice words. I feel firmly that God's put me here, and so I would like if you would let me open our meeting up with a prayer. Heavenly Father, you created the world and breathed life into it. You know and love each person in this room, each teacher, administrator, and student in our schools, and you have a plan for us. You have work for us to do. Thank you for using us in such a mighty way. Thank you for blessing us with the talents and life experience needed for us to do our jobs, to educate, to love, to plan, and provide for your children, our students. Tonight, I ask that you lead Marion County School Board in unity as they consider the work before them. We trust that each one was placed here by your divine authority for a purpose. Let them value one another, gain insight, and work together to accomplish the plans to make our schools and our community a better place. I pray for our teachers and administrators. Those who grow weary, Lord, give us the rest and renewed vision we need to see this job through. Let us see our students with your eyes. Give us wisdom to know how to reach them where they are, and lead us to help them learn, to be confident, to grow. Lord, also, help us to forgive. Forgive our students, forgive our coworkers, forgive ourselves for when we mess up. Lord, this job is hard, and when we are too weak, I ask that you be our strength. Last, I pray for our students. God, I ask that you protect them and give, and keep our schools safe. For students who are suffering at home, I ask that you make school a refuge for them. Send a friend or a teacher their way to comfort them. And in everything we do, God, let it be to build these children up. Every day, I ask that you make us all an open door for your love to walk through. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Now, if you will stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Civil立正
... of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as you can see, we have so much to be proud of in Marion County public schools, and I don't think that our committees could have chosen two finer teachers to represent the over 3,000 teachers that teach our children every day. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With the exception of Item C-17.1 that has been pulled and placed under discussion, I recommend approval of the agenda for the February 26, 2019 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
May I?
Moved by Ms. McCall, second by Mr. Cummings. Okay. Did you guys get it?
No. It's open.
You want me to do it for a ball?
No, let me try, open it again. Okay.
All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose, like sign.
Mine never came up.
Yours never came up?
It's a yea, Mr. Cummings.
And the motion passed 4-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 3, 2019 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Cummings, second by Ms. Thrower. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose, like sign.
Do you join the meeting, Frank?
I do.
Maybe go out and try to come back in.
Lock me out.
Can we just do for a ball?
We can.
Okay, are you an aye? Okay. And the motion passed 4-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 8, 2019 School Board Meeting?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, second by Mr. Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose, like sign.
Did you get mine?
Uh-uh.
It's the atmosphere.
I didn't get yours either, Ms. King.
Oh, you didn't? I voted.
You voted?
Mm-hmm. You want us to do a verbal? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the motion passed 4-0. Mr. Mark Vianello, Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, would like to recognize the agreement of Future Educators Choice Academy with the University of Central Florida's Community of College Innovation and Education.
Good evening, Ms. King.
Good evening.
Reverend Cummings, board members, Dr. Mayer, Mr. Gibbs, and Ms. Lopez. We have, I have here with me tonight a crew. I'll start off by introducing Dr. Tara Halls. Dr. Halls is a program specialist within the CTE Department. Ms. Kira Shaftey is a Director of Teaching and Learning. We're here tonight to talk about a partnership, a partnership between the University of Central Florida, Go Knights, we have some guests we'll all introduce here shortly, and a partnership between the Vanguard High School Career Choice Academy, the Future Educators Career Choice Academies, and, and please wait for it, Go Knights, that's a match made in heaven there. So for the viewing audience at home, a quick reminder of what is a Career Choice Academy. Career Choice Academy is a CTE, it's a Career and Technical Education Program of Choice, specifically designed to meet the workforce and economic development needs of our community. We started them a few years ago. We had logistics program, as you recall, at Westport High School and at Lakewood High School. Manufacturing was moved out to Bellevue High School, information technology at North Marion High School. Next year, very proud to say, we'll have an entrepreneurial program at Forest High School and a power and energy program at Denellon High School. So all of our high schools next year will have a Career Choice Academy. One of the ones that we're super proud of and very excited of is the Vanguard program. Talking about the talent pipeline, we understand there is a teacher shortage here in Marion County, across the state and across our nation. And we have 43,000 students that attend our schools daily, so we have home court advantage in trying to get these students to attend or enter the career of, of education. So I'm going to turn it over right now to, to Mrs. Shaftey, and then you'll hear from others.
Good evening. Students in Vanguard's Future Educator Academy have the opportunity to graduate with the credits to earn their AA degree through the College of Central Florida. After earning their associate degree, students will be able to continue their academic journey as a cohort, earning their bachelor's degree in elementary education with a special and, with an endorsement and special education from the University of Central Florida. This Career Choice Academy keeps talented students here in Marion County where they will further their education and have a successful career. As Mr. Vianello mentioned, Vanguard's Future Educator Academy allows us to grow our own educators amongst our high school students to fill a critical need in our district. Research says more than 60% of US teachers work within 20 miles of where they went to high school. Building our own teacher pipeline through hands-on experiences provides our secondary students with a running start as they begin to build their teacher toolkits. This program helps broaden and diversify local teacher talent pools to help combat teacher shortages facing districts across the nation. Our Career Academy model serves as the vehicle to invest in 43,000 potential teachers.
As Mrs. Shaftey mentioned, we will intentionally draw on the richness and the strong roots that we have here in Marion County. To this end, we're pleased to share a few highlights from the Future Educators Academy Agreement between Marion County Public Schools and the University of Central Florida's College of Community Innovation and Education. For students, it offers an economical way for them to complete their bachelor's degree through a nationally recognized university. We have begun this cohort model here in high school, and that will continue on as they enter college and provide an opportunity to work deeply with their future colleagues. And some of the coursework can be offered here locally. For our district, the agreement provides curriculum resources and professional development support to not only our lead teacher, but the students while they are still here in high school. We benefit from support and networking through UCF's Consortium of Future Teachers, which includes many districts statewide. And lastly, UCF will work with us to coordinate an evaluation of the progress and effectiveness of our program. By keeping our Future Educators Academy students local and supporting their progress from high school through receiving their certificate of eligibility to teach, we create crucial bonds with not only our future educators, but our future workforce. And now I'd like to introduce to you Dean Pamela Carroll and Dean Robbie Ergle from the UCF College of Community, excuse me, it's such a long name, UCF College of Community Innovation and Education to speak.
Thank you very much. I'm Pamela Carroll, I go by Sissy, so when we run into each other, and this is my colleague, Robbie Ergle. Dr. Ergle is really the best ambassador of Marion County that you could ever want, so if you ever need somebody to, to fill in that role, please grab Robbie because she has really been the champion of this project to, to really build and really emphasize the existing relationship between UCF and Marion County and build it stronger and work to, with Vanguard to build this teaching academy partnership. It is part of a statewide effort now, but we're really excited about the strength of these efforts as a kind of grow-your-own program so that the students who start here in, in as early as elementary school or even preschool can, can work with their families to, to see a pathway to becoming teachers and come back to Marion County to be the, the teachers who understand the community, who understand the, the needs of the community and the children and adolescents here to come back to teach. We will provide the, the kinds of technological advances and the, the kinds of teaching curriculum and all that our cutting-edge, as our faculty in teacher education do, but you provide the, the personnel, the students who are right for your community, so we are thrilled with the opportunity to work with you, and thank you for that opportunity.
And next, we'd like to welcome the heart of the program and what this is all about, Future Educator Academy teacher Lori Bates, and some of her inaugural Academy students from Vanguard High School are here. Lori was featured, was the featured author this last weekend, if you read in the Ocala Star Banners Other Voices column, that was entitled, "How Reading Convinced Me to Become a Teacher." So please welcome Lori and her students.
Hello, good evening. Again, my name is Lori Bates, and I am the lead teacher at Vanguard High School, and I am proud to be surrounded by my inspiration, why I come to school every single day. This is the first year of the program at Vanguard High School, and I'm pleased to say that we have about 80 students enrolled in our course levels 1 through 3. We're going to be adding course level 4 next year, so we're really excited about that. We currently partner with Oak Crest Elementary School, where our Vanguard High School students intern in the elementary school classrooms. They learn from master teachers at Oak Crest, gaining that hands-on experience. Our academy students have the opportunity to apply the teaching methods and instructional strategies that they're learning in our classroom as they intern with the Oak Crest Elementary students. Working with the students at Oak Crest reinforces that dream to teach. And every time we head back to Vanguard High School, the conversations on the ride back, "My student did this," or "Look, I got a picture from one of my students and they sound like teachers already," it's wonderful. Some of our Vanguard High School students hope to work in the secondary sector, so they want to either work in the high school or at the college level. So they intern on campus, working alongside of our Vanguard High School teachers. We use the soft skills that Mr. Vianello has strongly encouraged and that our CTE teachers are implementing in our, in our program, soft skills like communication, work ethic, dependability, positive attitude, and teamwork. All of those skills are critical for success, not only in careers, but in, in life. So I want to introduce to you a few of my academy students, and they're going to just share a few things about the program, what they like about the academy, and what they've learned.
Hi, I'm Zachary Bell. I am part of Ms. Lori Bates's CTE program for education. And overall, I would personally believe that this has been a huge boon for my dream of going into teaching secondary and post-secondary education. And throughout the year, I have learned things such as soft skills, even down to simple things like learning a lesson plan for the day, and I believe that my dream couldn't be completed without something like this program, and I'm so glad to have my, my facilitator, Ms. Lori Bates.
Hi, my name is Carly Crouch, and I'm a senior at Vanguard High School. Admittedly, at the beginning of the year, I wasn't too sure that I wanted to be a teacher. But getting the chance to go into the classroom and be with students really showed me what it's like to be in that sort of environment. Every day, you have to work with your students and you've got to change your schedule, what you plan, based on how your students learn and how they interact, because not everything is cut and dry. And admittedly, I learned a lot of things from the students that I work with that I didn't learn before. Most of the time, I work math with little fifth graders, and sometimes they'll say some things that are just so bizarre to me, because when I learned math, it was a whole lot easier, but, a whole lot easier. But I think being in this academy and getting the chance to intern with Oak Crest students has really showed me what it's like to be a teacher and has made me more passionate for this career.
Thank you. All right. We have a- A little token for Dr. Ergle and Dean Carroll, so for our partnership. Thank you.
You should be giving gifts.
Oh, yes, and your match.
Oh, I'll go out of the way.
Oh, your academy shirt.
Oh. Go Knights.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck. Yes, thank you so much.
We look forward to seeing some of you back.
That's right. As Teachers of the Year, Rookie Teachers of the Year.
Mr. Kevin Christian, Director of TV and Media Productions, Public Relations, would like to introduce a representative from the United Way of Marion County, and we'll recognize Marion County Public Schools for conducting a successful workplace campaign.
It is my joy tonight, ladies and gentlemen, to introduce someone who needs no introduction, I think we all know, Commissioner Michelle Stone, who's been part of this community for decades now. She was the 2018 Campaign Giving Chairperson for the United Way Campaign. US Board members certainly recognize that the United Way of Marion County is the official charity recognized by the board, and of course, all of our schools and district offices participate in that giving campaign, as well as, is it called payroll deduction? Okay, so payroll deduction as well. I'm a part of that, I just wasn't sure what it was called. So our employees take part in that year-round. Our schools hold penny wars, they do all kinds of creative stuff, you've been out there to see that. So tonight, they, meaning the United Way, wanted to come to you to express appreciation and recognize those schools that took just a tremendous part in the annual giving campaign. So I'm going to introduce Michelle Stone. She's going to come forward and share some insight, and then she'll introduce the rest of the folks who are with her this evening. Commissioner Stone, Campaign Chairstone, and great person.
Thank you, Mr. Christiansen. And good evening, School Board members, Dr. Mayer. It's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. Before I talk about United Way, though, I will quickly do double duty on behalf of the Marion County Commissioners. I brought you all our 175th commemorative lapel pen for you to wear with great pride. We will be celebrating our 175th anniversary on March 30, and I know you all will be participating with many of your students, and we look forward to welcoming our community out that day at the McPherson Complex. So now, to the business at hand. I am pleased to be here tonight as the chair for the fundraising events for the United Way for 2018, and most especially to present the 2018 Gold Award to the Marion County Public Schools for your outstanding support of United Way this year. The school district is again our second-largest workplace contributor, and the monies raised through all the fundraising from the, the individual schools as well as the departments totaled, drumroll, $163,826. And those, again, were generous contributions through the payroll deduction as well as the fun events that were hosted. We're going to be recognizing the individual schools and departments as our standout stars a little bit later in the upcoming weeks, but I wanted to share our deep appreciation for your support of this to the entire district tonight. So that's why I'm here, and I especially want to thank Sheri Morris, Nancy Grant, John Curley, Suzanne McGuire for their help in helping coordinate the campaign. And I want you all to know that these dollars stay local in Marion County, and they will have a very big impact on our community. So again, thank you, and I have an award. And I especially want to thank Sheri Morris, Nancy Grant, John Curley, Suzanne McGuire for their help in helping coordinate the campaign. And I want you all to know that these dollars stay local in Marion County and they will have a very big impact on our community. So again, thank you. And I have an award to present and I think Mr. Curley is going to accept on your behalf. And this is Natalie McCombe, who has been instrumental in helping with the campaign as well through United Way. And she is a paid staff there as the Resource Development. Thank you. Resource Development Director. So, Mr. Curley, it's with great honor that I present this Gold Award to you for 2018 and thank you so much for all that you've done.
Thank you very much.
Before we do that, I'd like to welcome to the podium Scott Quintell, who is the Executive Director for United Way, who is going to share some additional information. And I'd be remiss if I also did not introduce Jessica Nispit over here, who is taking some photos as well for United Way.
Thank you, Commissioner Stone and Dr. Mayer and School Board. It's a great honor to be here. Commissioner Stone really highlighted the generosity of the district and and your team here that works out in the community every day. To to highlight that a little bit, not have it just be a dollar amount, those dollars will represent 12,600 services that will be offered to residents in Marion County. So those are Marion County children, those are Marion County families that will receive services because of the generosity of you and your team here at the school district. So really appreciate that. I also want to highlight that it's that it's more than just the dollars. It's about engaging, it's about giving back individually. There are several of your team here at the school district that volunteer for United Way, for United Way's partners, and other nonprofits in the community. So it's really truly putting their efforts where their pocketbook is as well. Specifically, there are two of you here on the School Board that do that. Chair Kelly King, you have been a longtime reading pal at Reddick Elementary School and really appreciate your time and commitment to that. And also, Board Member Beth McCall, you currently serve on our Education Vision Council that guides a lot of the work we do in addressing early childhood literacy in the community. So appreciate that. The district as a whole has also been a fantastic partner with our Reading Pals Program where we work with over 225 kindergarteners in Marion County every year to build their literacy skills. We partner with you in 16 different elementary schools here in Marion County and we're very honored to have that partnership with you. And the latest addition to that partnership has been our Strong Families Initiative where we work to help families become more financially stable. We've been doing that here in Marion County for going into our third year. We are entering our second year in the Donellen area and those classes and that program now is housed at Donellen High School. So without the being able to use that facility, we would be challenged to provide those services to the southwest part of the county. So really appreciate all the ways that we partner with the school district and are always looking for more ways that we can work together to serve the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
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 Mr. Kevin Christian, Director of TV and Media Productions, Public Relations, and Ms. Sheri Potter, Coordinator of Curriculum and Instruction, PE, Health and Wellness. Would like to recognize Maplewood Elementary for receiving $20,000 over two years for adaptive PE to implement Comprehensive School Physical Activities Program curriculum to improve the well-being of students through increasing physical activity opportunities at Maplewood Elementary School.
That was a great introduction. Good evening. I am Sheri Potter. I'm the Health, Wellness, and PE Coordinator in Curriculum and Instruction. Typically, I love to come talk about our FANS program, Fitness and Nutrition in Schools, but tonight, we're going to recognize a new partnership to Marion County Public Schools that we're very excited about. So tonight, we're going to be joining the Florida Department of Health with Maplewood Elementary. A special thanks does go to our DOE partner, Nicole Wilder. She's the one that gave us this opportunity that it was coming up and it was $20,000 over two years to improve the well-being of all the students through increasing physical activity opportunities at Maplewood Elementary School.
That was a great introduction. Good evening. I am Sheri Potter. I'm the Health, Wellness, and PE Coordinator in Curriculum and Instruction. Typically, I love to come talk about our FANS program, Fitness and Nutrition in Schools, but tonight, we're going to recognize a new partnership to Marion County Public Schools that we're very excited about. So tonight, we're going to be joining the Florida Department of Health with Maplewood Elementary. A special thanks does go to our DOE partner, Nicole Wilder. She's the one that gave us this opportunity that it was coming up and it was $20,000 over two years to improve the well-being of all the students through increasing physical activity opportunities at Maplewood Elementary School.
That was a great introduction. Good evening. I am Sheri Potter. I'm the Health, Wellness, and PE Coordinator in Curriculum and Instruction. Typically, I love to come talk about our FANS program, Fitness and Nutrition in Schools, but tonight, we're going to recognize a new partnership to Marion County Public Schools that we're very excited about. So tonight, we're going to be joining the Florida Department of Health with Maplewood Elementary. A special thanks does go to our DOE partner, Nicole Wilder. She's the one that gave us this opportunity that it was coming up and it was $20,000 over two years to improve the well-being of all the students through increasing physical activity opportunities at Maplewood Elementary. This monetary award will allow adaptive PE to take great strides in improving not only equipment but implement the Comprehensive Schools Physical Activity Program for the entire school. Thanks to this team behind me, we made this opportunity a reality for students at Maplewood and I would like to recognize this team because not only did they get us here tonight, but they're going to bring us into this exciting future at Maplewood. So we have Dr. Cheryl Alves from Exceptional Student Education. We have Lael Corpey, our PE Program Specialist. Chrissy DeSanza, the Principal at Maplewood Elementary. Her Assistant Principals Cindy Lowe and James Martin. And of course, Mary Williams, our Adaptive PE Teacher. Tonight, we were to be joined by Brian Russell from Tallahassee. He is the Manager of the Disability and Health Program with the Florida Department of Health, but between here and Tallahassee, he had a conflict. So tonight, Kevin's actually going to read some words that Brian sent in his absence.
Brian actually emailed this to us and these are his words, okay? So they're not mine, they're his. He says, "The Disability and Health Program is very excited to be working with Marion County Public Schools and Maplewood Elementary School to provide more opportunities for physical activity to students with disabilities. With this joint project, Florida joins only one other state in the nation that is specifically implementing an adaptive physical activity program for students with disabilities. Together, we are leading the way to a more inclusive community and state."
Thank you, Kevin. So at this time, we're going to bring Ms. DeSanza up, the Principal at Maplewood Elementary, and she has a very special guest for us tonight.
Good evening. So on behalf of Maplewood, we are so excited to be a part of this grant. Our school motto is "Side by Side for Success" and we believe all students deserve equal opportunities. This grant will provide access for students to use adaptive equipment to play alongside their peers. Tonight, we brought one of our amazing students to demonstrate how he uses an adaptive tricycle. Here's Mason Howe, one of our third-grade students with our adaptive PE teacher, Coach Mary Williams.
Oh, that looks fun. Look at that smile. Oh, that looks fabulous.
Thank you for this opportunity. Do you all have any questions?
No, thank you. I'm very excited to see what you guys can do at Maplewood with all of the adaptive equipment. It'll be fun. They could even be in our bike rodeos.
That's right. That's right. Thank you for just always being the innovators for our kids with disabilities in Marion County's public public schools. You definitely set the bar high year after year and it's a pleasure to partner with you. So thank you so much.
It's a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rock stars.
I will now ask the School Board's Attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on School Board and School District matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the School Board Secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in the order of receipt by the School Board Secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the Board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the speakers or procedures for public comments, item number six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the Board's requirements.
Thank you. Elena?
Mr. Whitfield Jenkins, please.
My name is Whitfield Jenkins, 2200 Northwest 24th Road, Ocala, Florida 34475. I'm coming to you tonight as President of the Liberation of Ocala African-American Council to speak on the issue of the African-American History Task Force and most specifically the education workshop that is going to be conducted on, I think, May 4th. Before I do that, if I could just take a, Dr. Meyer, I've been so impressed. It's a White School Board meeting, but I know you like to present a book at meetings and I'm really focusing on Black History Month and we only have two days left, so I'm hoping that in 2020, that during Black History Month, that you will share a small section of this with the other Board members.
Can I borrow it? Thank you. Oh, thanks.
Having said that, I do want to, let me, go ahead and do this to conserve my five minutes. I think I have one.
Were these provided in advance?
Are these provided in advance? Did you did you provide these in advance to present to the Board? I'm going to give these to the Attorney because it's our procedures and he'll get them to us. Thank you.
Is a Marion County School Board Newsletter, 19, and if you look at if you look at the date, that's 1968. And the reason I provided that for you is that since we entered Black History Month, it might help sometime to know some of the history of Marion County school system 50 years ago. You'll see in there that I was a teacher in this school district, one of the first teachers to teach across race lines in Marion County in 1967-68, where I was one of two African-American teachers that taught at, I'm sorry, the the junior high school that's adjacent here.
Asiola.
Asiola. Asiola, junior high school. And you'll kind of see some little statements there that should be of interest to you. Having said that, Dr. Meyer, this, you received a letter from Anthony Tony Hill dated February 21st, 2019, basically describing for you the task force that is statutory created in Tallahassee for schools to to strive for being an exemplary school on teaching black history. And he had a workshop date in there of May 4th, 2019, and you responded back. And it was your response that prompted me to come because you indicated on that day, he had indicated in the letter, the participants would be administrators and teachers, and you indicated that administrators, on that day, you had another event. And you didn't really go any further. So in my mind, I wasn't sure whether there was going to be any additional effort to either go forward with trying to be a part of the workshop or not. So I wanted to come tonight to encourage you to view that, review that, look at the full content of the letter because he asked for two categories of participants. He asked for administrators and he asked also for teachers. And I followed up after seeing the letter and reviewing the letter with him. I wanted to be sure. He said the teachers were the most important component of what he was asking to attend. And he also provided in there the 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 content, the information of Marion County beginning the process to be an exemplary school district. And then he had some language of other school districts that have made that decision. And so I was just so enthralled with the prospect of Marion County become an exemplary district that I decided, let me go to school board meeting and encourage the Board. So last night about 6 o'clock, I did some filing of emails to every Board member with the thought that some of you may not be checking your computer every day, might not have it before tonight. So if you didn't get it, it's there for you and you'll have the information. But basically, what I was asking, Dr. Meyer, is to review the information, see if at all possible, the Marion County School District can participate in the workshop and consider the Marion County School District starting the process to becoming the exemplary district.
My email actually said that many of our administrators will be tied up on May 4th because of the principal pool, but I would share it so that others could attend if they wish. Absolutely.
But I didn't know whether that you were going to go forward for decision, you know, other than sharing the information, was whether that was going to be a kind of administrative decision, we're going to participate and and that kind of that kind of decision-making. So I don't know to this day, even tonight, whether or not that you will be, but I was hoping you would.
Yes, sir. I'm going to share it. Absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thanks for the book.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Ken McAtier, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Secondary, please come up and give an update regarding the work session discussion held on Thursday, February 21st, 2019, on math adoption and the Governor's Executive Order Number 19-32.
Good evening, Chairwoman King, Pastor Vice Chair Cummings, Board Members, Dr. Mayer, Ms. Martinez Lopez, and Mr. Gibbs. I know that Ms. Sizmar and Ms. Leeds, who are here to work with us on instructional materials, did a very detailed presentation to you on at the work session last Thursday on our options based on the Executive Order 1932, and you seemed to come to a consensus at that point. We're here to answer any questions that you might have formulated since then and just to, if you have anything, please let myself, Ms. Leeds, and Ms. Sizmar know.
No questions. I'm good with all.
We're good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now go to the public hearing part.
May I have a motion to receive public input prior to Board approval of the 2018-2019 recommended instructional materials for adoption at a public hearing scheduled for March 12th, 2019? Second. Moved by Mr. Cummings, second by Ms. Thrower. Any discussion?
Okay. All right. This public hearing assures compliance with Board Policy 4.21 by providing an open, noticed public hearing to receive comments on recommended materials prior to adoption. The vote on the adoption of the 2018-2019 recommended instructional materials will be during a public hearing at the March 12th, 2019 School Board Meeting.
Do we have to vote first? Let me go back and vote.
Oh, I apologize.
It's okay. We're good. Okay, all those in favor signify by voting aye. And there's that opposed like sign. Okay, and the motion passed 4-0. Here we go. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to provide input on the 2018-2019 recommended instructional materials for adoption? Seeing none. Okay. May I have a motion to approve consent, agenda items, C9.1-C201 with the exception of item C17.1, which has been pulled and placed under discussion? Moved by Mr. Cummings, second by Ms. McCall. All those in favor signify by voting aye. And there's that opposed like sign. And those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed 4-0. May I have a motion to approve the deductive change order number one, Amendment Number Three, to return unspent funds concerning welding lab renovations at Donellen High School, Project Number 16-116, in the amount of $540.22.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, second by Ms. Thrower. Do we have any discussion? See and none. All those in favor signify by voting aye. And those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed 4-0. May I have a motion to approve the renewal partnership agreement with Kiwanis Club of Ocala, Inc. for Camp Kiwanis?
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, second by Mr. Cummings. Ms. Thrower, you pulled this item for additional discussion.
Yes, I did. And I'll just start by saying that our kids went to Camp Kiwanis and absolutely loved it, and it's been a big part of our community for so many years. And I've had the opportunity to also meet a lot of teachers and administrators that are Kiwanis Club members. So the reason why I pulled it tonight was because there was a time when it didn't seem like the school system was very willing to support Kiwanis during some financial tough times. And so I just, I think, looking for some reassurance and for some background on Kiwanis and what the district's commitment is to make sure that Kiwanis, Camp Kiwanis continues and that we continue to support it just as much as we can. It's just been a wonderful, wonderful partnership. So that's what I'd like to hear. That's what I'm hoping to hear.
And Ms. Beck and Ms. Boston-Allister here, and Ms. Beck has some great background.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Ms. Martinez Lopez, and Mr. Gibbs. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to talk a little bit more about that partnership between the Kiwanis Club of Ocala and Marion County Public Schools. And I agree with you. When people hear Kiwanis Club, they definitely think Camp Kiwanis, and there's lots of wonderful stories connected to that. And so we come before you this evening to talk about the agreement. The last time that we brought forth the agreement was three years ago, as it was a three-year contract, so that would have put it June in 2015. We really wanted to make sure that when we brought it forth this time, that we clearly articulated really what we talked about here in the beginning, the partnership between the Kiwanis Club and Marion County Public Schools. And so the Kiwanis has continued to agree to do a number of things, but in addition to that, Marion County Public Schools is also agreeing to do their part to create this partner or to continue this partnership really for the benefit of our students. They get to partake in it not only during the summer camp experience, but also there are many school groups that would utilize that during the week during the school year. I'll give you a personal one, for example, as the Assistant Principal of 8th Street, and now that my child attends 8th Street, one of my most favorite things that they do is they have camp days, and it's at Camp Kiwanis. And it's a wonderful experience, and that again is at no cost to the school. So let me quickly run down when I have reviewed the contract. Let me talk about the things that the Kiwanis Club is committing to, then I'd like to hit the highlights of what Marion County Public Schools is agreeing to. The Kiwanis Club will continue to pay to the U.S. Forests rental fee connected to the property. They will also pay property insurance, materials and parts for maintenance and repairs that would be needed for improvement. As an update, we have reworked the agreement that kitchen equipment located at Camp Kiwanis that if damaged by a private party or by an act of God or has reached the end of its usable life, would then be replaced by Kiwanis Club. If it is for some reason damaged during camp or by use during one of our school-sponsored activities, then it would certainly then be the responsibility of the school board to pay for that. They will also continue to pay for fees connected to electrical use, telephone service, which would include internet. As an update, they will pay for the Kiwanis Club, trash pickup will pay for trash removal fees, and they will maintain that throughout the year, except for during those weeks during summer camp. And we will have agreed to put two additional dumpsters out there that we will take care of because again, during that time period, it is our students that are utilizing and certainly then creating that waste. They will continue to maintain septic tanks, including septic service. And a biggie that I want to make sure that I talk about is that they will continue to provide scholarships to our students. These scholarships are really invaluable. Having been a school-based administrator, our guidance counselors would have facilitated that and still do continue to facilitate that. And they're pretty specific on the criteria that we would really be looking for. Could be students that do not have the financial means to go to a camp such as Camp Kiwanis. It could be that they have identified homeless status. It could be because they have suffered some trauma and really could use and benefit from a week away at camp to have really those lifelong experiences. And in addition to that, what I didn't realize, but I was really told about, was that the Kiwanis Club also provides for these children what they would need to go to camp. So that would include bathing suits, toiletries, clothing items, you know, whether it's a duffel bag to put that in, and they then get to take those items home at the end of the week. And so I also think that that's a wonderful way that they're, that they feel equipped and ready to go to camp. And then in addition, something new that they have committed to this year is that they will provide a camp storage container that our school system side will be able to house camp materials for that would be utilized for each summer. Typically, that's been stored in another location. It will now be stored in a larger storage container. So what does Marion County Public Schools agreeing as part of this partnership or agreement? That we will pay up to $15,000 in labor costs annually, so that's the labor, they provide the parts, we do the labor. That we will provide routine mowing, grounds upkeep, and basic maintenance on an annual basis. I've talked about the kitchen equipment. New this year that the school system will put in and remove at the end of the summer four floating docks, which again would be utilized during, for the children during the weeks that summer camp is open. I've talked about the dumpsters. The school system also provides regular service for the water system, the water treatment system, and then also will be taking care of the water quality testing for swimming purposes as the children are out there in the summer. So with all that being said, why do we do this? Why does Camp Kiwanis do their part? Why do we do our part? It's really because it's providing an opportunity for our community, our students. It's an enrichment opportunity that some of our kids would never get the opportunity to experience. I have learned that Camp Kiwanis has been in operation since 1948, and really when looking at, well, how long has this partnership even been going on? I had to get with my historian, Scott Mitchell, who has assured me that for at least the last 25 or 30 years, there has been a partnership between Kiwanis Club of Ocala and Marion County Public Schools. And in fact, I think recently they, we even looked through a contract from long ago and just to look at how far we've come from one of those original contracts was written. It also provides some employment for some Marion County staff members who help during those weeks at camp, as well as I learned that high school students, 22 high school students are hired to help work at the camp as well. And really, I will go back to what we started with, is it really is a positive relationship between the two organizations, and it's really something unique for our district that I can't say that all communities have. And as a side note, again, I will say, having been an administrator in the schools, having worked very closely with Kiwanis Club, maybe not with Camp Kiwanis, but I do want to tell you, they were wonderful supporters of our terrific kids program, our bug program bringing upgrades. And then when I was at Sunrise, and I'd never heard of it, they just came and they said to me, we're coming, we're going to work with your K-2 students, we're going to give them all books three times a year. And I said, really? What do we have to do for that? And they said, nothing. And these books were beautiful books, and really, it was just to create and instill that love of reading. And that was really all initiated through that group and again, grateful for that partnership. So that's what I come to you tonight, to share a little bit of historical information about Camp Kiwanis.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You think 75 years, over 75 years of a partnership and the community taking responsibility and being involved with our kids and our schools and us likewise, that's what builds strong communities. Thank you so much for sharing all that information. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just sitting there listening to you, and I know it goes back very, very far, very, very far. I've been at school 30 years, and it was there when I was a kid. So, and there's always been a great relationship. And as a Kiwanian, I'm glad that we're going to maintain this relationship because they have so much, we have so much we want to give to, back to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Cummings, Board Members, Dr. Mayor, Mrs. Martinez Lopez, and Mr. Gibbs, I think Ms. Beck has, she's evaluated everything, but I did want to bring to your attention that every time we renew a contract, we evaluate what our investment is, whether it is a like-kind investment or where it's actual dollars. And what we've noticed in prior contracts is there was never any quantification of that contribution. So in this particular contract, we went back and talked to support services and sort of talk us through what you're doing currently, and then based on the contract that is before you tonight, what will be additional services. And I think Mrs. Beck has provided you a summary of all those services, but I wanted to quantify that with you as well. And we're estimating about $47,000 a year, which includes the cost of campers, our students that participate in the program, and it even includes food service. What happens with food service is because it is what's called a closed camp, not every student can attend, so we're only reimbursed for those students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch. So the district has to contribute to whatever that reimbursement doesn't cover. So of that $47,000, about $20,000 of it has to do with food service, whether it's the food, the camp, the manager that she stays there for the entire camp period and maybe one or two employees that work with her. But we just wanted to quantify what the investment is, just in the light of being transparent. So if anyone ever asks you, order, what is Marion County Public Schools doing, that is the, what we estimate is the contribution financially.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, for all the positives, for less than $50,000, it's incredible return on investment.
Absolutely. And what it does for our kids.
Yes.
And the day camps, I know that when my kids were at South Ocala, they had the opportunity to go out there for the day camp, and it's a tremendous asset to us.
Yes.
No, you're not, my children went there. They loved it.
Did they?
Yeah, and I loved it too. All right. Are we ready to vote? Were your questions answered, Ms. Thrower?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. And I'm just very reassured because, you know, it's creating opportunities for children all the way.
All right. Here we go. All those in favor signify by voting aye. And those that oppose like sign.
And we do have a representative, I think, of the Kiwanis sitting in the audience right there.
Ah, hi. Would you like to say something?
I would.
Yeah. Give me one moment, please. And our motion passed 4-0. Okay. I have to take care of business.
Thank you very much for recognizing me. My name is Nick Nickenin with the Property Appraisers Office, but as Ms. McCall mentioned, I am a Kiwanian. Actually, as the chairman of the trustees of camp, I wanted to thank Dr. Meyer and all the staff, Mr. Mitchell and Linda, and all the staff that we've worked with over these past months in renegotiating this contract. It's been a wonderful experience, and you all have been terrific to work with, and very pleased that we renewed this and give Mr. Mitchell some, a peace of mind that he can, you know, begin the new term well in hand for a new camp season coming up here shortly. So, thank you very much again, and appreciate it very much. You guys do. Yes, thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $27,757. $1,000 to Bellevue Middle School from Rotary Club of Bellevue. $1,263 to Fesiden Elementary School from Shambrew, Inc. $2,000 to Chevrolet Express 2500 Cargo Van valued at $1,250 to Lake Ware High School from Mr. William Allison. $5,000 to Marion County Student Media Festival from Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to Marion Technical College from their business partner Jenkins-Acura Via Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $5,500 to Marion Technical College from Summer Glen Veterans Club. $2,500 to Marion Technical College from Summer Glen Veterans Club. Incentives for reading classroom, teacher supplies, uniforms, and miscellaneous items valued at $3,593.38 to Oak Crest Elementary School from Junior League of Ocala. $1,550.62 to Oak Crest Elementary School from Junior League of Ocala. $2,600 to Vanguard High School from Vanguard High School Baseball Boosters, Inc. $1,000 to Vanguard High School from the National Society of High School Scholars. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thrower. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by voting aye. Oh, wow. I think it did. And the motion passed 4-0. Ms. Thrower, would you like to thank?
Sure. Once again, the community just continues to step up to support Marion County Public Schools and our kids, and on behalf of the whole school board, we can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you. The next special administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, February 28th, 2019, at 11:30 a.m. The purpose of this work session is to have an ESE roundtable discussion. The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, March 7th, 2019, at 9 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss SRO update, school staffing plan, new charter school application, district staffing plan, appointed superintendent, and two executive sessions. Okay, we're going to move to our committee reports and concerns, and Dr. Mayor, we will begin with you.
Okay, great. Thanks. Well, tonight, our OPD officer that is sitting in with us, she has a special connection to our board, Reverend Cummings. Would you like to introduce her?
Yes. Officer Malaya Woods, who is a member, a proud member of the New Zion Missionary Baptist Church, one of my members, so glad to have her. And she is away from her baby and her husband tonight, newborn baby, so thank you. Thank you, Officer Woods.
How old's the baby?
Six.
Oh, my goodness, girl or boy?
A girl.
Okay. Well, that means now that every time you're with us, you have to bring pictures and an update, okay? Thank you, Officer Woods, for being here. Okay. So as we came in, we saw a big burger, and so, Mr. Christian, can we get, are we getting a shot of the burger? Okay.
We'll get it.
So, believe it or not, that's not a burger, it's cake. The big thing is a cake, and then the little burger-looking things are also cake. Now, last night was the Burger Bash at MTC, which is our Marion Technical College, and it was a competition, a burger competition, just like on Food Network, between all of our culinary programs. And so that burger was, the burger cakes were made by our students. So I would like Mr. Kelly and Mr. Vianello to come up and just give a little brief synopsis of what happened last night and how it happened.
Bring up Chef Vitali as well here. So I want to give a big shout out to Rondo- So, I want to give a big shout out to Rondo Fernandez. Rondo is the Chair of our Business Advisory Council for Culinary Arts. This was his idea. He's worked with our culinary teachers to put on our first Burger Bash. So, all of our middle school programs participated, our high school programs participated. This was a fierce competition to see who could create the best burger. And I'm going to leave it there, let the suspense build a little bit, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Kelly or Chef.
Actually, I just want to turn it over to Chef, because he's the one that was involved with it last night and the creator of this beauty here.
Superintendent Mayor, School Board Members, thank you. So, it was a combined effort. We had local celebrity chefs. So, we had Jen Gant, who is the Human Resource Manager for Chick-fil-A. We had Jose Juarez, who is the barbecuing, who was on Regis and Kathy Lee, and he actually won a burger contest. So, we let his experience. Patrice Perron, the owner of La Cuisine here in Ocala, as well as Chef Randall White, who was the chef, head chef at Mark's Prime. So, those were a panel of judges. They got judged on creativity, taste, and presentation. We worked on soft skills. So, they actually presented the burger to the judges, and they got to announce to everyone in the room exactly what comprised of the burger. Donellen scored highest as far as the People's Choice Burger, and their burger was unique because the bottom bun was actually a mac and cheese bun that they had made in a waffle iron.
It was so good.
And then the judges' champion was Bellevue High School, led by Chef Darren Nine, and he had an onion jam. And all of his products that comprised of the burger were locally sourced, which included the grass-fed beef from here locally at Fort McCoy. So, the burger we have here, it's comprised of seven pounds of yellow cake mix. The burger that you see in the center is five pounds of Ghirli chocolate brownie mix. Everything you see as far as the tomatoes and the cheese, that is all Airheads candy that we had rolled out with a rolling pin, and the heat is kind of getting to it now. So, with the generous donation of a silent auction, we sold the larger cake, it's on display, but we want you to have the best. So, we also made cheeseburger sliders today that are all edible. There's no actual meat or anything, there's no eggs in the product. And then we decided also, you have to have a order of side of fries, so those are actual pound cake french fries. And we dusted it with a little bit of airbrushing, edible airbrush, so.
Wow, let's get this meeting over with.
But all in total, proceeds raised were over twelve hundred dollars for the Skills USA program.
Yay. Bravo.
Listen, one thing I have to say, I am a burger fanatic. Next time you have a Burger Bash.
Absolutely.
I am telling you a year ahead of time.
Yes, sir.
Put me down to be a judge.
It doesn't have to be burgers, anything. We'll say.
Definitely. I just want to be the judge. So, write me in now, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Vianello, write me in now.
And I'm going to sell a selfish plug here. If you come to Christie's Cafe any day at MTC, you can get a burger at our cafe.
All right.
I haven't had their burgers. I've had their fries, and they were pretty good, actually.
Okay, maybe we'll have to have lunch there.
Yeah, we should.
And I wouldn't be remiss, as an educator, there's times where to educate, and there's some times that we facilitate. And the last three days, Helen Lindsay has kind of spearheaded this, and I actually just facilitated, just watched them get creative. And they would ask me little bits here and there, and they'd push me away, and that's great. But she herself and the entire culinary crew did a great job. So, hats off to her.
Congratulations.
What are the hours of your cafe at MTC?
Monday through Friday, eleven to one. Yes, ma'am.
Good to know.
We're going to open up breakfast for here shortly, too. So, it'll be from eight to two in the afternoon.
Excellent.
I want to encourage folk to go out to MTC. They got so, I was just thoroughly impressed, thoroughly impressed when I was out there. They got so much stuff going on over there.
Especially the culinary department.
Yes. I'm waiting for the massage parlor thing to open up, so. Physical therapy, I'm waiting on that.
Get your hair done and have a burger all day.
That's great. Get an adjustment.
Yeah, get an adjustment at the same time.
We're going to move forward with before dressing expulsion. Oh, you're not?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So, tomorrow's a half-day, let's not forget. So, families, tomorrow's a half-day, please make those accommodations. Tomorrow's also School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. So, a big shout out to all of our bus drivers, we appreciate you, and those new buses are coming, so we're very excited about that. Tomorrow also is the Black History Museum Open House at Silver River. It's from four to six p.m. under the auspices of Mr. Mitchell, who was just here. So, four to six p.m. at Silver River Museum. Tomorrow's also our History Fair at our District East Office, and that kicks off tomorrow evening. So, please stop by and see the displays and then see the ceremony to award these young people who are just putting so much into learning history. I keep saying that Marion County, we're the county who thought civics was cool before the governor said so. Okay, so, last week was our Spelling Bee, that was a tremendous success. A young man from Howard Middle School won that, so he and the second-place winner will move on to the state championships in Orlando, and hopefully from there, they'll go to the Nationals with Alex Trebek in Washington, D.C. Ms. Shaftey mentioned earlier that our Teacher Job Fair is April twenty-seventh. This year, it will be at Vanguard High School, because we're going to tap into our future Educator Academy students, who are going to help be the concierge and help with that day. So, that will be on that day. Picture here from last year, and one of the teachers we hired from last year, she's at Howard Middle right now. And also, our Principal and AP Assistant Principal Selection Day is going to be May fourth. Usually, I end my comments with a book, but tonight, I don't have a book, I have a true story to share for you, with you briefly. Last week, at one of our secondary schools, during a class, teacher's teaching a class, and during that class, one of the students stood up in the middle of class and indicated that the students said that harm was going to come to the class, to the school. Without even thinking, that teacher took herself and put herself between the student and the rest of the class and took care of the situation without even a second thought. She put herself in the line of danger to protect those students. All was well, the student was making up a story, but the teacher didn't know that at the time. So, that just says everything about the greatness of our school district, and we are so grateful to her, to her colleagues, for making Marion County just a great place to be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elena, do you have anything? Mr. Gibbs? Ms. Thrower, we're going to begin with you tonight.
Ooh, all right. I get to lead off. Fun fact about the Spelling Bee, I think it was the word arachnid that won it?
Correct.
Yes. So, just goes to show you. I just think that the word of the night is partnership. This has been such an uplifting school board meeting, and I'm so happy about the partnership with Camp Kiwanis. I had the chance to participate and congratulate the fifth graders at Maplewood that graduated from the Dare Program, another great community partnership. We're getting new buses, that's fantastic. And there's just so many wonderful partnerships being created in the community with our CTE programs, all our vocational, technical things. Marion County Public Schools is definitely on its way up, and I just continue to be excited every two weeks to come to the school board meetings and share in everything that we're doing and work hard to try to be as much a part of it as I can. So, those are my short and sweet comments for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
That was a record, by the way.
That was. Good evening, everybody. It has really been a busy, busy, busy few weeks we've been on. Ms. Thrower and I were both at Ward Highlands for Science Fair. Those kids are very talented over there at Ward Highlands. It was extremely, extremely good morning, it was a cold morning, too, on all the things that we saw, those kids, just some bright kids, and we have some great innovators coming down the pipe, coming out of Marion County. And then also, Dr. Mayer and I have been on this trek around the county with these raised beds, raised bed projects from the FANS, Fitness and Nutrition Schools. And it has been great to do that, to see these kids getting out, planting the dirt, actually seeing where food comes from, to be able to plant in the soil. I actually did get my hands dirty, finally. But it's great, I want to thank Marion Oaks Elementary, Hammett Bowing, Emerald Shores, and Oak Crest, we were out there. It's just been a great week. Harborview was the first one, I think, and it's been great to see what's going to happen. Last Thursday, we were over, all of us were over at the Howard Academy for the reopening of the Black Archives and Museum. It's awesome to see what they've done with the place, and as I said then, that we're glad that the history is still being written. And to know that some of those that are here on the board, on the board with us, Ms. McCall, who also have a part in that history of being at Howard Middle, Howard, it was Howard Elementary then, Howard Elementary. So, we have a great, great, great history. And then I do want to thank Mr. Jenkins, Whitfield Jenkins, for coming out today. We did get the email concerning the legislation that they put out about us going to the African-American History Task Force, and I, too, am planning to attend on May fourth. So, I'm looking forward to what teachers are going to go with us and be there, because I looked at the communication, there's only ten counties, ten districts in the state that are considered exemplary. Broward, Duval, Gadsden, Hillsborough, Leon, Miami-Dade, Palm Beach, Pinellas, St. Lucie, and Volusia. So, Marion County has the opportunity to get onto the list early out of sixty-seven counties, so we can be in the top of being one of those exemplary school districts. So, I'm looking forward to that, looking forward to whatever teachers are going out with us. And then, again, we want to, we pray for Ms. Stacy, who's not here tonight, pray that she's safe and everything's good with her, her family as well. But we are moving in a good direction. I'm ecstatic about where we're moving. We're just looking forward to doing great things in Marion County. It's happening daily. We have some great teachers. I want to shout out to all of the bus drivers and the ones that work in transporting our kids back and forth to school daily. Sometimes we take things for granted that we don't have any acceptance, that nobody's, nothing's happening, but they have a very important job, just getting our kids back and forth from school. So, I want to thank them personally, to all of them in the Transportation Department. Thank you so much for taking our precious cargoes from home and bringing them back home safe and sound. So, again, thank you all, and we look forward to our next meeting.
Ms. McCall?
Yes. I also wanted to comment on the Howard Academy opening of the Black History Museum. Everybody that worked on that, it truly is a gem for our community, and the history, the interactive boards was wonderful. I saw my old classroom, I was there for five years at Howard Elementary, teaching third grade, and it was a very special time in my life, and I really enjoyed it. Wanted to also congratulate the partnership with UCF and our Education Academy. I think it's tremendous that we have the ability to do that, and the CTE programs see a need in the community, they talk to the community, and then they're beginning to fill those gaps. I'm hearing marvelous things about those programs as I'm in the community. So, kudos to Mr. Vianello and his staff, because it just continues to grow, and I think we're going to see great things. And the fact that our kids can, if they choose not to go to college, and they choose to go right into the workforce, they actually are going into really good jobs because of CTE. And I just, I think it's marvelous. It's great for our community, it's great for our economy. To our board members, I would like to remind you that the Public Education Foundation Thursday morning, prior to our work session, nine to ten, is having a really good breakfast. And I think you all think you know what the Education Foundation does, but I really encourage you to attend, because you really don't know all that they do. And it's a marvelous learning opportunity, and they're going to feed us. So, you know, I think we should go. So, I encourage everybody to be there. And the awards for the History Fair are at what time? The awards ceremony?
Six o'clock.
So, the awards are at six o'clock? Okay. It's on my calendar for most of the afternoon, so I wasn't sure what time the awards were. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, I'm not available to attend the meeting Thursday, so I don't want you guys to think I'm just not coming. I have, we have review agendas, the agenda review. So, I'll be done attending that.
Well, maybe I can get you to a lunch and learn with me.
Okay, yeah, let's do that. We'll just make sure we announce it.
You got it.
Okay, good. Also, I, the exemplary district, the program, that struck a chord with me, too. I want to see that for us. And so, I look forward to hearing what takes place at this meeting, and I also look forward to seeing who participates in it. I think there's probably ways of asking, I think if every teacher knows about it, I'm sure there would probably be some that would like to attend. So, I hope that we do a good job of making sure everyone knows that this is available for them on this date. And then also, when Ms. Beck was standing before us earlier, it made me realize that we haven't had any quickback updates for our bottom schools. And I'm just kind of curious what happened to those, because as a school board, it is our, we need to make sure we're doing our due diligence, and we are aware and we know exactly where our schools are, so there's not any surprises, good or bad, come the summer. So, I would like to encourage that those take place again. They just kind of faded away, and I don't know.
No, they're quarterly. You'd ask for quarterly? We did. We asked for quarterly, because they were coming every meeting, and we wanted information based on the QSMAs, this is back when I was chairman, and the iReady, and to come quarterly, and then they would have the attendance and the discipline built into that. We did ask, we did ask for the.
Did we? Okay, because I was like, when I saw it, just.
So, it should be coming up.
So, March it will be?
Yeah.
Okay. So, now that we're into it, do we think that quarterly's fair enough, or do we think we want to be a little bit aware?
What information?
Just how our bottom, our bottom schools, like our, you know, we have the bottom schools, and I'm just, want to make sure that we're just really paying close attention to them, because we did have a hundred and sixty percent increase in these DA schools last year. And I don't, I want to make sure that we're on top of it and we're not having any surprises. That's what I just want to make sure.
And I don't disagree with that. I just wondered, other than the QSMA and the iReady data and the discipline and the attendance, I'm all ready to have more, but what else can we ask for?
It could be, I mean, it can be that information. I mean, our attendance is done daily. I mean, we should be knowing how we're doing as a district, you know, even with our attendance. If we're waiting three months to know what attendance and discipline looks like as a board, maybe we need to be paying more attention to that. And it just, when I saw Ms. Beck, it just kind of dawned on me. I was like, you know, we haven't really heard, I'm not sure we have a good pulse necessarily, you know? I mean, we can look at our attendance daily, but.
I have to say, I have to give a shout out to Brian Tindall and Randy Taylor, they are data wizards. And with sadly having Evergreen and Oak Crest in the positions that they're in right now, and being in my district, I've been really working hard to try to keep my finger on the pulse, because attendance and tardies, like you said, are just, you know, huge, huge issues that can make or break a school. So, if any of your schools, you know, you're interested, definitely Brian and Randy, I mean, they are like the guys that can get you the information like that, they've been wonderful. I wasn't, you know, we weren't on the board when you guys decided how often, now that we're getting close to testing season, is there, you know, it sounds to me like you're thinking that it would be good to me to get those, that information a little more often?
Well, just to kind of have a pulse on, I think a better.
No, I don't want to, I don't like to get blindsided with anything. And I think we probably do need some more frequent updates, so that we're not blindsided, and also so that the public will know what's going on, that we are asking the tough question, that we are getting the information, that we do know exactly what's going on.
Right.
Right. Yeah, that's what I think, I just, I just feel like we don't have a good pulse on that, and where is that needle? Like, I'm not sure we can honestly say at this point, you know?
Which way is it?
Can you? Where? Yeah, exactly. So, I think that would probably be good if we just did that more frequently.
Because I definitely have some concerns about the academic performance of Evergreen under this external operator. So, I would very much think that that would be important, and hopefully, we're not going to have any other external operators, but if we're spending good money on them, we should be getting more regular updates, I think, from them to make sure that we're getting the bang for our buck.
I think we all have some concerns.
About Evergreen.
With Evergreen.
Yes, we do.
And that, those are things that we need to have out there and not at the last minute that we're not going to succeed or whatever it is. We need to make sure we have that stuff out front.
Because if we end up being dissatisfied with Evergreen's performance under the external operator, are we obligated to continue with them for?
It's a two-year contract, but I do believe there's an out clause, isn't that correct, Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, there is.
Yes.
Okay, so, maybe that would be one to start with because if we're not feeling comfortable, then maybe the discussion needs to begin about options.
Well, we have eleven, we have eleven schools, though, that we need to be concerned about. So, I am very concerned with Evergreen, but I'm also very concerned with our other schools also because they're going to be.
We don't want them in the same boat.
We do not want that to happen, so I think we need to make sure that we just have a better pulse because I'm just.
So, at the next board meeting, do we want a turnaround school update on just those eleven schools?
Yes, I think that would be.
With quick, we'd be pleased to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, oh, no, thank you. We'd be glad to share, we'd be glad to share and thanks, Ms. Thrower, for keeping up with the other data, too.
I've been keeping up with Beverly.
Yes, I know you have, thank you.
Right, and that kind of dovetails into when we were supposed to have it anyway, right? Was it?
It's coming up, yeah.
On the agenda? Was it already on an agenda for March or not yet?
Off the top of my head, um.
Okay, well, but we'll get it.
Can we get it on, can we get it on the agenda for the first board meeting in March?
For March?
Yeah, we still have time, don't we?
Yeah, mhm.
Great idea. And we'll move forward.
Thanks.
Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through February seventh, twenty nineteen. Mrs. Martina Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, ma'am.
May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD nineteen dash zero nine nine E. with educational services through the remainder of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year and the first semester of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year?
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, second by Mr. Cummings. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by voting aye and those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed four zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD nineteen dash zero nine eight with educational services through the remainder of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year and all of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year?
So, move.
Moved by Mr. Cummings, second by Ms. McCall. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by voting aye. And the motion passed four zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Moved by Mr. Cummings, second by Ms. Thrower. All those in favor signify by voting aye. And our motion passed four zero and the meeting is adjourned.